Good evening, welcome to the Cheltenham Council meeting. Thank you for taking the chance to contribute this to your watch. Can I just remind you that, just as a procedural matter, the council at our live stream in this particular meeting, and firstly, I'd like you to stand for the traditional acknowledgement. We acknowledge the traditional owners of the land on which we'll meet today, and pay our respects to the elders past, present and emerging.
Our opening prayer. Almighty God, we humbly ask you to help us as elected councillors of the Ararat Rural City Council. Guide our deliberations. Prosper what is your will for us, to your honour and glory, and for the welfare and benefit of the people whom we serve in the Ararat Rural City.
Councillor's pledge. We will undertake the duties of the office of councillor in the best interest of the people of the municipal district of the Ararat Rural City Council and faithfully and partially carry out the functions, powers, authorities and discretion vested in us under the Local Government Act 1989 or any other act to the best of our skill and judgement.
Thank you, councillors. And first, Mr CEO, I ask if you have any apologies?
We have apologies from Mrs Colleen White, who is on leave this week and she suffered the council on Friday, and also from Alistair Rowe, our CFO, who would normally be here tonight to assist in presenting the budget, but he couldn't be with us tonight.
Thank you. Councillor's declaration of disclosures of interest, if you have any. Madam May has any? Reports requiring a council decision, the draft Revenue and Rating Strategy 2018. Councillors, do you have any recommendations?
Thank you, Madam May. The purpose of tonight's special meeting is to deal with three items, all of which are related. There's the Draft Revenue and Rating Strategy, there's the council budget for next year, and there's also the updated council plan. All of them are interrelated and all have a bearing on one another. First report in the agenda tonight is the Rating Strategy, set out on page four of the agenda. This is a report that covers an enormous amount of work that's now been done over the past six months that followed a recommendation of the Commission of Inquiry last year to engage in a new rating strategy that involved a community advisory group and ultimately the testing of some of their recommendations against the citizens' jury. So I'd like to acknowledge that we have in the gallery tonight some members of the Rural Strategy Advisory Group as well as some members of that citizens' jury. And at the outset, I want to thank the people that participated in both of those processes because it was both an exhaustive and, I think, exhausting process. The advisory group dealt with an enormous amount of work over a five-month period, which culminated in some recommendations being made to citizens' jury that spent a very intensive weekend working through those recommendations and ultimately delivering advice to the council. The council has taken that advice on board. It's done some modelling around the recommendations that come forward. And the one new piece of information that both the advisory group and the citizens' jury didn't have access to at the time, all due to timing issues, was the new valuation figures. The valuer general has now provided us with the new valuation figures. They're still audited at this stage, so whatever is adopted in the rating strategy will be subject to any minor changes as a result of that auditing. But nevertheless, they've been used for the modelling purposes. When briefed on the outcome of the jury process, the council asked for a number of options to be modelled. Those options are set out on page eight of the report in front of you. And the top one, which is the title of the draft rating strategy, is the one that's incorporated into the recommendations tonight. In doing so, the draft strategy incorporates a number of features. First of all, it is based on the capital improved value of land, and that's a necessary valuation basis to use if the council wishes to use differential rating. And differential rating was a recommendation of both the advisory group and jury. It also includes the use of differential rates, again, both of which differential rates were recommended by both groups. It includes the same three differential rates that were incorporated in previous strategies. That's a general rate, a commercial industrial, although they have been merged into one group now rather than two, and a farm rate. The recommendation also includes a number of administrative matters in terms of how we will assess eligible properties under those categories. And it also recommends that the differential rates be based on a 100% general rate, a 125% commercial industrial rate and a 55% farm rate. It also includes a municipal charge of $94. Both the advisory group and the jury recommended the use of a municipal charge, although the council has not considering a recommendation here for a charge quite as high as what was recommended by the jury. But it has been indexed in accordance with the Fair Rates Programme. So there's a very detailed recommendation there. It's proposed that the strategy be brought in for a three-year period, so that it covers this budget and the following two budgets. It incorporates capital improved values, I said, three differential rates around general, 100%, commercial industrial at 125% and farms at 55%. It will also require reviewable farm properties, so anyone seeking a farm rate will have to apply for it. And it will include a municipal charge at $94. So have you taken any questions, Madam May?
Thank you, Mr CEO. Any questions? Is someone happy to read the recommendations?
This is a procedural matter, obviously sets out the view of the council. But the important thing is the people have to... Take the decision later on the 26th of June. So I'd suggest to everyone, if you have issues with any of the sections there, that you put a submission in writing to council and deal with it then.
Thank you, councillor Beale. Councillors, any further discussion? Councillor Armstrong.
Thank you. Thank you, councillor Allgood. Essentially, I think I want to speak to this motion, but I would like to outline a couple of points within this draft rating strategy that I have particularly wrestled to come to terms with. And I think it's... I'm really taking this opportunity to express the opinion that's come through very, very strongly from the Rating Strategy Advisory Group and also the citizens' jury. And I think this is a pretty good time to remind people that everybody will consider their rates are still too high, even if it's the fairest outcome within a broken system. And I think that's the point I really want to highlight, is that essentially, we have a pretty archaic system of taxing our citizens to then run our council services and infrastructure. And I think that goes back to the wealth principle and the very fact that farmland, of course, is going to increase in value by a substantial amount. 25% in one jump is the anticipated figure, and that's going to have a considerable impact across our municipality. Another fact I think that people need to bear in mind is that, I can't remember if it's 43 or 46% of wealth is actually land-based across Victoria. And so I find it a little bit too simple to say that rates is a wealth tax because we're not actually taxing all of our citizens' wealth within our municipality. It's only the land. And farmland is the tool upon which this sector of ratepayers rely to be able to try and make a living. So notwithstanding the extraordinary efforts of the Rating Strategy Advisory Group and the citizens' jury and their recommendations that have come through, I have to say, I really do applaud the move to combine the commercial and industrial rate into the one level of 125% and the acknowledgement within that the sustainability of commercial enterprise and industrial effort in our municipality is a major grinder, just as is primary production across our municipality. Another issue that I've wrestled with has been the municipal charge. And I do respect the 10% recommendation put forward by the Rating Strategy Advisory Group. And I've always struggled a little bit with the terminology that a municipal charge... is a regressive tax because I actually support the principle that we all at some time or another make use of those municipal services at different stages of our life and experience. So I think that's a very conservative rise of just 2% or 2.25% to take our municipal charge from $92 to $94. But it's maintaining that charge, which I think is very important. So those points having been made, yeah, ready for anybody else? Thank you.
Thanks very much, you both, for those comments. I'd just like to... Oh, sorry, sorry, Gavin.
I'd like to not necessarily talk against the motion, but suggest another one. "I'm mindful that the rate stability and expectations of a future strategy are important to all ratepayers. To that end, the farm differential rate should be gradually adjusted upwards to reflect common ground necessary to restore decency, fairness and equity." It is my recommendation that option three from the Ararat Rural City Draft Strategy 2018 be adopted should this motion fail. You probably don't agree with option three, but essentially it's general 100%, commercial 200%, industrial 120% and farm 65%. An own municipal charge. An own municipal charge, I think, is a very important thing as I think it strikes at the core of our community. Option three does not charge... Option three does not change the farming rate on the dollar to determine your rates, but does reduce the very high general rate by 16%. As a farmer, you pay $4,000 rates per million of the capital improved value now. After the introduction of option three, you will still be paying $4,000 rates per million. The difference is that the farmer's now worth 25% more and clearly wealth is growing faster than rates. The same cannot be said for the town, where it feels like rates are higher and properties are increasing in value. The possibility exists that an ownness equity in a house in Ararat is a net deficit when considering rates paid against increasing home values. This strikes at the heart of the issue and demonstrates the core issue of capacity to pay.
This motion passes before us tonight, councillor. Councillors will actually take on board councillor Ford's remarks or recommendations. Can I just say that this is just something that's going to actually go out to the people now, Mr CEO, for them to come back and to comment? And I'd just like to thank everyone for coming tonight and still taking the interest here. But as of now, I shall put the motion in favour. Oh, sorry.
No, just wanted to make the comment that all taxes are regressive, it's what they're used for that's important. And the municipal charge is probably the only tax which is actually tied for a purpose. It's for the running of the administration of the council. But the current municipal charge in Marantz Dushawara, I came from, is $333. We are very low for municipal charge. But as the acting mayor said, this decision isn't being made until the 26th of June, and all these issues will obviously put tools of us. So that's all I wanted to say from here.
Thanks very much, councillor Beale. Councillors, I shall hand over the motion in favour of the motion. Beale, you want no? Against? I'd like to reflect that in the minutes. Councillor Ford is voting against, the much... Or is I in favour of? The next item on the agenda, councillors, is the draft council plan, 2017, 2021. And we have five recommendations on page 16. Anyone has the agenda? The wrong date, it should be the 8th of June on that one. In number three, it should be changed to the 8th of June for the Friday. Is someone prepared to move the recommendation? Councillor Brayton, do you have a signature? Councillor Armstrong, do you wish to speak to the motion?
Just briefly, please. Thank you, Madam Mayor. This is a very important document for council. The council plan is the blueprint which we work upon. We've done a very thorough review of it and I think it polishes up pretty well and I would like to move the motion.
Please, councillor Brayton, if you can, just allow me to speak.
One of the refinements to this council plan that really excites me is the goal to initiate delivery of the resilience project, with council having already commenced discussions with local schools and health service providers. As stated in the plan, the project will deliver emotionally engaging programmes to schools, sports clubs and businesses and provide them with evidence-based practical strategies to build resilience. Our council is rightly proud of its preventative approach to health issues across our community, with Ararat being the best recognised brand of this philosophy and practice. The focus has been physical activity and healthy eating. And what I particularly love about the resilience project is that it too is a preventative toolkit. Our community will benefit enormously from strengthening youth resilience across school years and into our workforce. And another really exciting project in our council plan is the East Rampins Water Pipeline, to which our state government has promised $32 million. This council strongly encourages the state of Victoria to pursue federal funding for this project to the tune of $53 million. The infrastructure will provide water security, diversify primary production and attract processing opportunities across the majority of our council footprint. I believe the key strategic goals of our council are outlined under the pillar of organisation and this is the very business of councillors. Our council's need for good governance through leadership has been demonstrated by extraordinary events over the past 12 months. Our interim CEO and monitor are patiently persistent, providing expertise and encouragement to councillors to ensure policies and good governance are in accordance with pledges for the requirements and best practice. And there has been the silver lining and the cloud of our annus horibilis. The level of community engagement from the people in our municipality has been truly remarkable. From the almost 700 submissions made to last year's draft rating strategy, budget and council plan, plus the exhaustive work done by the Rating Strategy Advisory Group and citizens' jury, as alluded to earlier by Mr Borden, to the thousands of people who viewed the live stream of last month's council meeting. What an opportunity to capture momentum and harness this interest in our local government. This is our council's golden opportunity to learn from and relate with the people who live, work, learn and play in our municipality. So I commend this draft council plan and really encourage our citizens to read it and take note of what all of those strategic goals are.
Thank you, councillor Armstrong. If someone wants to speak, just for the motion? If not, I shall put the motion in favour. It's unanimous.
Sorry? You need to vote.
I said it's unanimous, okay? I feel like I'm waiting for someone to add advice. Do you have any time? Page 23, the draft budget. That's something that we've all been taking a big interest in. Mr Borden, please.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The draft council budget is presented tonight and there's a recommendation there that the budget be approved for putting on public exhibition to enable the community to comment on the budget over the next 28 days. And like the previous two reports, the rating strategy and the corporate plan, the submissions to the budget will be considered at a council meeting in June. The budget's been prepared on the basis of a number of parameters and influenced by a number of prevailing influences in the external environment. If I could perhaps just run through some of the influences that set the background for the budget. The council is, of course, on the revenue side, still constrained by rate capping. And this year, the Minister for Local Government has set a maximum increase in council rates of 2.25%. And that amount has been factored into the draft budget. Another major influence is about addressing the capital renewal needs of our infrastructure. We've also had a good look at operating costs of our various services and facilities. There's the ongoing challenge of having a relatively small ratepayer base that has to service a very large infrastructure area. There's user charges which are few and have limited opportunities to generate more revenue, so hence the council is still heavily reliant on rate capping... Sorry, rates and the need to govern grants, which of course continue to lose their real value through cost shifting. And so, given all of those constraints, the budget has been prepared on the following basis that we'll be levying rates based on the rating strategy that we've approved before, subject to the submission process. There'll be a rate increase of 2.25%. Municipal charge of $92 per property. An increase of $35 for recycling, which has been occasioned by the collapse in the international market of recyclables. There'll be an increase of... In our total capital works have exceeded about $6.3 million, so it's been a determined effort to maintain our capital spend, particularly in the era of renewal. And all of our service delivery will be in accordance with the approved council plan. So the budget's been prepared over a considerable amount of time and I'd like to acknowledge the input of all council staff in the preparation of the budget. There's been a number of briefings with councillors to get some input into the plan that we'll put forward in this budget. So the budget before you is recommended for adoption and for placing on exhibition for comment over a 28-day period, which would enable submissions closing on the 8th of June to be considered for council meeting in June. Are there still questions? I'll get it ready, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, Mr Borden. Any questions? Is anyone want to speak? Councillor Brayton?
Well, have we moved to second of the motion? Madam Mayor, I'd like to propose a sixth recommendation. We've heard in the last two months from our community about how much money we're spending as a council and its impact on the high rates that we pay. We've heard that from the Rating Strategy Advisory Group, we've heard it from the citizens' jury voting group. And I'd like to propose then that a sixth recommendation be that there be no rate rise in the 2018-2019 year. We've discussed as a council how we would manage that in terms of alternative funding. And I think that finally, our council is deserving some good news from this council. And I'd move that when I have the opportunity.
One, two, three, four, five are as written. And number six is that there be no rate rise. Do we have a second? Councillor Beale? Do you wish to discuss it? Councillor Beale or Councillor Brayton?
Yes, well, the issue really... The jury and the advisory group harken upon an issue that's been raised from the very beginning of this council and raised in the Commission of Inquiry, that we have champagne tastes and we're a beer-ba community. And the reality is, we have to start somewhere. And we've been sidetracked over the last couple of budgets. And this budget is a sort of status quo budget. I know that CER is doing lots of work in relation to the administration and cost effectiveness there and outdoor as well, where all the areas have been looked at. But there is at the present moment sufficient in reserves to cover this 350-odd thousand as a one-off and it will affect the proportions of amounts of money people are paying. But we also have come into some money in the past selling some of our previous assets, like the industrial estate which ratepayers paid for in the beginning. It's only right and fair that that goes back to lower the actual amount of money in the budget that we need.
Thank you, councillor Beale. Anybody else wish to speak to the motion? Councillor Ford?
I think the reality is that rates will be going up when you look forward. To not take a small rate rise this year would probably mean we have to have a bigger rate rise next year or the following year. I would like to have stability in what I expect. The 2.5% is a status quo, really, from the state government. I think in reality, this council could have actually asked for a bigger rate rise. But I think my position is that we're conservative and we should do the 2.5%.
Any others speakers? Councillor Armstrong?
Any others speakers? Councillor Armstrong? This is an issue I wrestle with as well. I can understand councillor Brayton's argument. It's quite clear that we had a very strong message from the Rating Strategy Advisory Group and the citizens' jury. And the notion of being able to utilise some of the reserves that have been put aside by our current generation of ratepayers, it's a minimal amount in the larger scheme of things. And I think this council needs to work harder in conjunction with neighbouring councils, in fact, all small rural councils, to pressure more support from state government. The fact that we have such an enormous asset renewal gap is deeply concerning. Looking through the strategic resource plan, you can see the forecast of those figures is really quite daunting. I understand councillor Ford's point of view. I understand councillor Ford's point of view regarding stability and being conservative with maintaining our income base. So trying to weigh up how I might stand on this issue. I have great confidence that the work being done by Mr Borden, his interim CEO, in satisfying the minister's requirement following the council commission of inquiry to look into our long-term financial sustainability, that that work done by Mr Borden is going to regress very soundly. And that there will be quite a clear blueprint, I think, in place, not necessarily prescribing what our next CEO must follow, but certainly the ethos of principle will be there. And the service reviews that this council will be undertaking, I'm trusting that they will actually identify where we can be more efficient and more effective and look at how we can better service our community with infrastructure and all of our service delivery planning that is undertaken really very seriously with the strategic resource plan. It is, it's just crucial that we work with our communities to encourage open communication and participation, which goes back to that community engagement I talked about earlier. The, it has to be a two-way conversation. And that's the only way that we as a council can match our funding priorities and options and solutions with our community's needs for infrastructure and services. So the obligation we have as councillors is to pursue those strategic alliances and those partnerships on a regional basis. And therefore we're in a better position to develop our policy and plan that service delivery. I just think it's part of our job description as councillors and I think that's a challenge that we can embrace by looking at the sixth condition, the sixth point in this recommendation of not raising the rates by the capital 2.25%. But as councillor Brayford said, actually deliver some good news to this community. Thanks. I think I've talked myself into a position.
Would you like to speak? Anyone else speak?
Yeah. Yeah, I'm sort of thinking like councillor Brayford, sorry councillor Brayford was thinking and I was a bit, you know, I was sort of more thinking like councillor Ford. Kind of a bit, yeah, a bit conflicted at the moment.
Thanks, councillor Ford. Actually, you give it back to councillor Brayford to sum up. There's a couple of remarks that I would like to make. If you look at the VLGA, they've done an analysis of the Victorian budget. And the reason I would support the motion is because there's been $1 billion for rural and regional roads included in $694 million for road restoration and upgrades. There's $17.4 million to establish regional roads to Victoria. There's $22.2 million for regional buses. So there's a lot of things in this, I believe, for our community. And there's a little million for motorbike coverage, not that that was one of our bills, but the one I liked the most, I think, was the fact that there's $20 million to improve the long-term financial sustainability for rural councils. And I think that's a really big one for us. And I think that we need to actually be going and speaking to government about the problems that we've actually had and ask if there may be something that they can do to help us, because I think this community should be entitled to some of that money that's been promised by the state government. We're delighted by the $32 million that we received the other day for the water. But I think we still do have some ways to go. Councillor Brayford, would you like to sum it?
Look, I do understand my fellow councillors' concerns about long-term sustainability. A factor that we live with every day in regional areas and rural areas. However, on this occasion, I believe we have the opportunity to give our community some good news from this council. I don't believe that it will cause any major concern in terms of sustainability. What we have to do is commit to find 2% of savings. And I think that will be something that we will be certainly looking for in Alan's assessment of our financial ability and the future of this council under a new CEO. So I'd just like to put the motion.
Thank you, councillor Brayford. And those in favour of the motion? Those who can. Thank you very much, councillors. Oh, okay. We've got three D G M O ready, haven't we? Okay, we do have some major business that we'd like to address, councillor. So I'd like, Mr CEO, would you like to talk about that?
Thank you, Madam Acting Mayor. Yes, we've dealt with all the business for which we gave notice and because it is a special meeting, you're only generally allowed to conduct any business for which you've given notice. But since the last council meeting, we have had a resignation from the council. And as a consequence, we won't be having a formal election to elect a new mayor until the VAC countback is conducted on the 21st of May. But in the meantime, we require an acting mayor. Our local law indicates that in the absence of the mayor, the deputy mayor, chair or council meetings, but it's silent on the formal acting mayor for the remainder of the time. And there are certain things that the acting mayor is required to do in between meetings, such as signing documents and so on. So it's my suggestion that we should elect an acting mayor to cover us from this period through until the meeting at which the seven councillors can elect a mayor. And in order to do that, we would need to consider two resolutions. The first is simply to agree to deal with the matter tonight, which wasn't on the agenda. And then the second would be, if that was successful, to then formally appoint you as the acting mayor. So if councillors are comfortable with that, I'd invite a motion. No, you don't need to leave. Yes, we need a motion. If the councillors agree to consider the appointment of an acting mayor during the special meeting tonight under section 844 of the Liberal Government Act. Let's move second. Have a seat there. All those in favour? Carry. Unanimously. So given that that was carried, I then invite a motion. Yes. The count back, yeah. And all seven councillors present at the meeting to conduct the election. So let's move councillor Beale, second councillor Brayford, those in favour? Against? Carried. Congratulations, Madam Acting Mayor.
Thanks, thank you, councillors today. I'm having trouble with this chair. It keeps running away from the table as she gets it. I'd like to thank everyone for coming tonight. And I certainly look forward to your submissions if you feel you would like to make one. And I think that one of the major things that we've been able to do tonight is to have a new rate rise. And so I think Janet might have been saying on stage that this might be a basic plan for other municipalities to try this system, because I think it's going to be one real win around this and that's a rate payer. So do all of you put your hand up to be part of the consultation and everything? If you feel like making a submission or a suggestion, we would like to hear from you. So thank you very much for attending tonight and I welcome you to stand around here, a couple with us in the middle chat. Thank you, everyone.